Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of Akron City Council to order on this day, November the 20th, 2017, and this, the clerk will do the roll call.
Freeman.
Here.
Fusco.
Here.
Hope.
Here.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Here.
Milkovich.
Here.
Mosley Samples.
Here.
Neil. Is here?
No, but he'll be here.
Okay. Imovian. Sims.
Here.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swersky.
This evening, we will be led in prayer by Pastor Parker. He's from Open Door Assembly of God at 7:45 Upton Street. How nice to have you here tonight. I heard that this is your first time in the chambers with us.
Yes, it is.
So I want to thank you for taking the time to be here this evening, especially on this week of Thanksgiving, so we're thankful that you're able to be here. After you do our prayer, we will be led in the pledge. So anyone who would care to join us, send the pastor.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we give you praise and give you thanks, Lord, for this day. But, Lord, I ask and pray that you bless each one that is here. Lord, you continue to encourage them, continue to strengthen them, and continue to give them wisdom and knowledge, Father, and, Lord, to lead and guide and direct this city, Father, and to be the awesome city as it is already. I ask and pray, Lord, you continue to allow people that live in this city, Father, and, Lord, to make it a better place as well. Lord, it just takes one, and I ask and pray, Lord, today, that it will start today. Lord, if these men and women get together to do your will, to guide and to lead this city to be the best that they can, I ask and pray that you continue to be with them and encourage them as well. We praise you and we thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If those of you that have a cellphone, make sure it's on silence, and those of us on council, if we make sure we put them away. So I want to thank all of you. And our clerk will read the minutes.
Minutes from the November 13th, 2017 meeting. Council convened a regular session at 7:00 PM with President Keith in the chair. All members were present except Freeman and Fusco. Minutes of the previous regular meeting were approved. Neil abstained. Reading of petitions and communications. Passage of the consent agenda. Report of standing and special committees. Passage and referral of new ordinances and resolutions. Representation from various departments and divisions. Public speaking period. No further business on a motion by Fusco. Council adjourned at 8:01 PM to reconvene a regular session on November 20th, 2017, or a special call.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
There's been a motion to approve?
Is that better?
And there's been a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will do a voice. If you'll do that, I'll mark it.
We have some confusion here. I don't think Mr. Fusco was here last week.
Oh, I, okay.
We'll correct those minutes.
That would've been pretty loud from where you were.
Okay, roll call on the minutes. Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Here.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples.
Aye.
Neil.
Abstained.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swersky.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got that.
All righty. And the clerk will read the letters, petitions, and communications.
There's only one, and it's the income tax receipts through the end of October 2017.
File. Now, those of you in the audience that are following, we are on the consent agenda now? Oh, yes. We're on the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the consent agenda? Veronica Sims, Councilwoman Sims, motion for an approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, I will go with Councilwoman Somerville, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we will do the roll call.
Roll call and final passage of the consent agenda. Freeman. Fusco.
Wait, aye? You said aye, thank you.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swersky.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda passes. We will go to rules. Councilwoman Somerville, what are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee requests time.
And time will be granted? Budget and finance. Councilman Freeman, what are the wishes of your committee?
The committee's report is favorable, and we're asking for suspension of the rules.
The committee has a favorable report, is looking for suspension of the rules. So council will now vote on suspension of the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Freeman, would you like to add anything to this ordinance?
In 2007, we, the city, had entered into an agreement with the Urban League, and there's been some restructuring of some debt there, and this resolution, or rather, this piece of legislation, just reaffirms our support, and with that, we're asking for its passage.
Thank you. All those in favor of this passage signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will do a roll call again.
Roll call, Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swersky.
Aye.
This ordinance does pass. Okay, we will now go to planning, and that is Councilman Fusco. What are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, President Keith. On the first item, the recommendation of the committee is for consent agenda.
Number one on planning will be consent. Thank you.
Thank you. The recommendation from the committee is for time on two, three, four, five, and six.
Time will be granted on two through six?
Thank you, and the recommendation of the committee is for suspension of the rules with a favorable report on seven.
Okay. And on number seven, this is an ordinance authorizing a conditional use to construct a 40-unit townhouse development at North Main Street and 12th Street, and declaring an emergency. All those in favor, as council as a whole, of suspension of rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. This is the, this is a great partnership with the Testa Companies and the International Institute in terms of housing some of Akron's newest residents. Whenever they arrive, there's going to be office space, there's going to be space for children's activities, so on and so forth. This is an apartment, 40-unit apartments, townhouses that are going to be constructed right next door to St. Thomas there, Summa. And so, International Institute, we'll have a presence there, as mentioned. OFA funds were utilized in terms of this development, a great complementary use within this neighborhood that's known for new Americans, new Akronites. So we recommend approval this evening.
Thank you so much. All those in favor of passage of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will do a voice count.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville. Swersky.
Aye.
And this passes unanimously. Okay, now we're down to number eight, which I bet will be filed. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the report. The committee is to file item number eight.
So number eight will be filed.
And time on the balance.
So time on nine through 20. Public Utilities. Councilman Neil, what are the wishes of your committee?
Madam Chair, continue time.
And time will be granted. And there is nothing else to come before us, so we will now go to the new legislation.
Okay, one second.
It's fine.
Okay. Item number one, offered by Fusco, ordinance, authorizing conditional use to increase the size of a previously approved oversized accessory structure at 590 Diagonal Road and declare an emergency.
Councilman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
For an advertised for public hearing.
This item will be referred and advertised. Thank you.
Item number two, offered by Fusco, ordinance, authorizing conditional use to construct an office and warehouse addition at 1033 Kelly Avenue.
Councilman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
For an advertised for public hearing.
Okay, and this will also be a December the 4th public hearing. Thank you.
Item number three, offered by Fusco, ordinance, authorizing conditional use to install a monument signed with an electronic message center at 183 West Sparkin Street and declare an emergency.
Councilman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
For an advertised for public hearing.
Okay, that public hearing is also December the 4th. Thank you.
Item number five, offered by Fusco, or four, excuse me, offered by Fusco, ordinance, authorizing conditional use to place CO, to place CO2 tanks at 1031 Forbes Avenue and declare an emergency.
Councilman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
For an advertised for public hearing.
Okay, and that public hearing will be December the 11th?
Okay.
Number five.
Item number five, ordinance, authorizing conditional use to construct an oversized accessory structure at 29 Forest Edge Drive and declare an emergency.
Councilman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
For an advertised for public hearing.
This item will be referred?
Item 5A, offered by Fusco, ordinance, approving the sale of city-owned land on the east side of West Center Street to Akron Children's Hospital, determining said property is not needed for public use, authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into an agreement to sell said property and declare an emergency.
Councilman Fusco, what are the wishes of your committee?
Part of the committee is favorable, and we ask for suspension of the rules.
The committee has a favorable report. They're asking for suspension of the rules. All of council will now vote on suspension of rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. We had heard this afternoon from both Mayor Horgan and President Considine of the Children's Hospital about this proposal, and in essence, what this is, is a transfer of property. There's four and a half acres, which formerly housed the AAA building. This four and a half acres also includes the AD West Bowery Building. Those properties would go to Children's Hospital in return for $1.8 million, I believe, and a property about three acres or so on Will's Avenue. As we know, that Akron Children's Hospital, they just do an outstanding job here locally, regionally, globally. Basically, it's a world-class operation. They've been growing, and this is a perfect place for them. This is located, of course, within the biomedical corridor as well, and I don't know if Mayor Horgan has any comments or not, but...
Thank you.
Daydreaming there, you had me spellbound. No, as Councilman Fusco said, if you remember the name of the place, it's the Akron Children's Hospital, and they've made a significant investment into downtown. And where, you know, quite frankly, they could build facilities in other communities for back-office operations, but they don't. They put them right here, and it probably represents a $15 to $22 million investment back into the community. And it does serve, and they are, Children's is all over. They do a wonderful job, and they're rated very high, and it's one of our best institutions to deal with. And so it was an easy, it was, we've been working with them for a couple of years at least to be able to help their expansion and help them to be able to grow, to provide great service here in downtown and in the city, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Horgan. We will now vote on passage of this ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will take a roll call.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Somerville.
Aye.
Swersky.
And that ordinance passes.
Item number six, offered by Councilman Kammer, ordinance, amending and/or supplementing Title VII, Chapter 70, Article IV, Section 70.53 of the Akron Codified Ordinances and declaring emergency.
Councilman Kammer, what are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee's report is consent agenda, please.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay. Item number seven, offered by Mosley Samples, resolution appointing Zach Cole and Ron Fowler Jr. to the Community Reinvestment Housing Council and declare an emergency.
Councilwoman Mosley Samples, what are the wishes of your committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee's report is favorable, and we ask for suspension of the rules.
The committee comes before us with a favorable report, asking for suspension of rules. Council will now vote on suspension of rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Councilwoman Mosley Samples.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, Ron Fowler II is currently the Executive Pastor of Arlington Church of God. Most of us around this horseshoe know the Fowler family very well, and he would be a great asset on this Community Reinvestment Housing Council, as well as Zach Cole, who is the owner and operator of The Well, as well as Compass Coffee. Both gentlemen come from good stock, and we would be happy to have them, and I think their added wealth and knowledge in the community will be a good service for our community. So we are asking for a passage.
Thank you. Did we receive Zach's?
We have, I note to have Ron Fowler Jr., but Sarah couldn't open it, but I can, so I'm just going to print it for mine.
Perfect.
But we haven't gotten Zach Cole's yet.
And I'm sure when we get it, you will get it, and you will be equally impressed, so, thank you very much. If you just see when we get that, when you get it. Thank you so much. All those in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman.
Aye.
Fusco.
Aye.
Hope.
Aye.
Kammer.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
Kilby.
Aye.
Milkovich.
Aye.
Mosley Samples.
Aye.
Neil.
Aye.
Imovian. Sims. Somerville. Swersky.
Aye.
And that resolution passes. That is all that we have to come before us in our new legislation. So now we will go, I know that I am a little bit chilly up here, I only can imagine what you're feeling like over there, so, hunker down for this part, okay? We will now go to the portion of the meeting we refer to as the public comment. Oh, no. No, no, you go ahead. I can practice while you go ahead.
I wanted to take the time publicly, if I haven't thanked you personally, for your support on issue four, and to wish all of you and your families a happy Thanksgiving in this coming week and the holidays. So thank you very much, all of you that were supportive of the efforts.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, now we will go to the portion of the meeting we refer to as the public comment period. If you wish to speak to this council during this time, you may approach the podium. Please sign in and state your full name, spell your last name, and as long as you have your address written down there, you do not have to say it out loud. You will have three minutes to speak to this body. Speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and germane to council business. Speakers should refrain from making personal attacks, and anyone who breaches decorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers. And I often add, not as much as I'd like to, but we don't hiss or boo or clap or cheer or do that, but, you know, but you can smile. Thank you, Teresa, for being the first one up to the podium, and we will wait in anticipation for what you have to say.
Teresa Gusssey, G-U-S-S-E-Y, last name. I'm here to talk about Narcam in the bait boxes. About four weeks ago or less, on the corner of Beardsley and Morgan, we had an overdose and he died. He went through the, my daughter and brother-in-law's parking lot at Acro on Grant and Morgan Street, and they saw him, and they thought he was drunk or something, but he went down the street and passed out on the corner, and my brother-in-law saw him and called the police, but they were on the way. Somebody else had evidently saw him, but he was dead. And in my neighborhood watch, on the next street, I'm not saying this street, but two people died over overdose. They were young people. So I was at West Side Group meeting Saturday, and I called everybody in the mayor's office today to ask about if we could get Narcam at the community centers. I know that some of these dope people use the baby changing tables for their dope, and they sometimes use, like, at restaurants and other places, the counter by the sinks and stuff, and if we had it and they were trained like the police, I don't know. I looked up at, I asked at the pharmacy at Walmart, because I had to buy some medicine that was really expensive, how you get it, and they sell it over the corner, but it's like $160. And I don't know if the city has something with the police that they get a deal or anything, but I talked to Jerry at Ed Davis', and he gave me a big hug, and he says that that would be a good, I think you have 12 community centers? I looked it up, I think that's right. And I think it would be a good idea, because even Jerry said that they did something out in the parking lot. Okay, but the bait boxes, I know in Cogafall's they did it, and I called the police today. I can't remember who, who I talked to him, but I thought that, and I talked to the mayor's office, and they said they didn't have money for the bait boxes right now, but I thought, well, maybe we could get the post office and FedEx, and I don't, can't remember the other person that delivers packages, but across the street from me, less than a month ago, they stole the package off of my neighbor's porch. My neighbor saw it, she called, and then she called to tell me to see if I knew or anything, but they didn't catch him. I would think that would be a good thing for the city to look into and the police officers, and Amazon, and I think they're responsible. It's not the person, because they never got the stuff, that the person that sends it, that we could check into it and see if we could get these businesses or, like the post office and the FedEx and whatever the other one is. I can't, I remember, but I'm getting old, and I can't remember everything. But I would think it would be a good idea for us to have bait boxes, because that deters. And thank you for talking to me. I know my time's up. Happy Thanksgiving. I almost said Happy Easter.
Thank you, Teresa. Thank you for bringing two very good concerns in front of us. Is there anyone else to speak at the public comment period? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment period. And we will set our times for next week's meetings. Rules Committee?
2:30.
Budget and Finance?
3:00 PM.
3:00 PM. Planning?
1:30.
1:30. Public Service? 2:00. Public Utilities?
2:30.
2:30. Public Safety?
2:15.
2:15. Parks and Rec?
2:15.
Housing? 3:30. Health and Social Services? 2:30. Economic Development? 2:45. And Green Committee? 1:00. Is there anything else to come before council? For the good of council, I see Councilman Freeman's hand up first, and then Councilwoman Mosley Samples.
Right, I know we're not in a church service, but our city, our city oftentimes shines because of certain individuals, and 20-plus years ago, I became aware of an individual who moved into what would kind of be the heart of the city and a neighborhood that maybe he wouldn't have normally lived in, and brought his family there, and founded an organization called South Street Ministries, and I'd just like for all of us to pray for Reverend Dwayne Krabs, very serious heart attack last night, and we just pray for him, and this is a man whose family we've got to watch up close and from afar, and when, you know, when I hear the term "the real deal," Dwayne Krabs is a man that I think of, so we could keep him in our prayers as individuals, and I'm sure that the family would greatly appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. Councilwoman Mosley Samples.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two things, very brief. I wanted to remind my colleagues of Ward Five's coats for the homeless this Saturday over at Grace Park. There's a box down in the lobby that Holly and Sarah helped me decorate. It's really cute, but it needs some coats in it, so if you all have some coats you want to donate, you can put them in a box, and I'll pick them up Wednesday. And I just wanted to publicly thank Holy Trinity Lutheran Church. They emailed me this morning, and they committed $1,000 to the event, and they're going to go out and also buy coats, hats, gloves, sleeping bags, and they're going to send volunteers[1619.24] from the church over to help pass them out, so, if any of you guys want to come and help me, I'm setting up to two, it's from three to four. It's a really good community outreach event, and the Love Truck is there on Saturday at the same time, and they feed the homeless at Grace Park every Saturday, even when it's cold. On days when it snows, Wesley Temple allows them to use their church facility, so, over on Prospect Avenue, they're just doing a wonderful thing over there with the, with the houseless community, not the homeless. And then, lastly, I'm not sure if, I'm sure you all don't know the young man, but there's a young man by the name of Little Peep, little young rapper, little kid, 21-years-old, real name is Gustaf Ajay, I think that's how you pronounce his last name, died the other day of an overdose. And, you know, I know we, we talk a lot about addiction and it being a public health crisis, but I'm not sure what the city is doing as far as our funds go, but I'm hoping that there's a real strong component mixed in with ours as it relates to mental health, because this was a young man, two days before he passed away, put it on his Instagram that he was depressed, and people would love him when he was gone, and then he was gone. And so, you know, everyone's talking about now that he was very depressed and telling people he was depressed, but he had all these people around him who clearly loved him, but no one ever said or addressed his mental health. And so, I'm hoping that we, as a city, that we make sure that as we're addressing this disease called addiction, that we don't forget about the mental health, because they go hand in hand. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you. The, I don't know if any of my colleagues have experienced this, some complaints, some[1655.08]